What do you got, 6:30? We can get started. Okay. Open the meeting for site plan approval. Open the meeting. Lemonster Planning Board for 6:30 June 4, 2018. We have public hearing. The public meeting for site plan approval for 45 SAC Boulevard Popeyes. Okay. Do we have someone to make a presentation?
Come on in.
There you go.
You're up right away?
You're up right on the.
We have an architect board over there.
Yeah, that'll be lovely, thank you.
We were just waiting for our architect to walk in.
All right. It all worked.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience. Uh, no, no. I think that we can wait. Good evening. My name is Richard Lewis and I work for Cinema Development. I'm a partner and senior project manager here representing Lemonster Chicken LLC. Here on their behalf is Ed Backish in the back here. Also, we've got Dave Gagny from Gagny Enterprises. They're the landowner. And Gary Wierostek from Wierostek Design and Construction. And they are the architect and landscape designer.
Okay.
The proposed project is a 46-seat dine-in Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen with drive-thru. It's located at 45 SAC Boulevard in a proposed leased area of the existing parking lot. The leased area is 15,157 square feet and is presently a 35 space section of the parking area. The site is zoned commercial. And as I said, it's an existing theater, as you all know, with an expansive parking area. And what we're proposing is to lease a small section of that parking. The proposed use is allowed by special permit, excuse me, site plan approval, which is why we're here this evening in front of you. Again, this shows, excuse me, sorry about that. This shows the eastern end of the existing lot, which is map 567 Lot 2. The proposed lease area is in this far corner at the intersection of SAC and Cinema Boulevards. And again, the square footage is 15,157 square feet. The snow removal area for the existing parking lot is located down in this section of that parking lot and it's going to remain as is. Once this is developed, all the snow removal will occur by the same company and be moved to that central location.
I'm just gonna point out, we did send updated plans, so based on some of the comments that were provided, so they have the original.
Yeah, and I can run through those quickly.
Yep.
There were several comments and we addressed all of them.
Well, once you go through and then go on to the comments.
Okay.
Or if you want to intersperse the comments, we'll just let you.
Yeah, there were only a few.
Right.
There was the snow storage area, which we've added.
Right.
And there was also a comment on the size of the sewer connection. Be six inches instead of four, which we changed to six inches. And then there were some landscaping plan comments, which Gary has addressed on his plan, which he'll go through.
Okay. I got one question as we get in. You talk about the square foot, you talk about the parking. Is there a reason that the lease does not include the parking?
That's why we brought Dave.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to find out. We realize the parking is there and I'm not worried, believe, I'm not worried about the total parking. You've got enough parking.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's done right. And I've seen some of these where the parking is separate like that, rather than being inclusive on the property. And it tends to get shabby or it gets lost in the total area. So that's why I was, my only comment was that if the parking was included into the total lot area, then you could landscape it all with Popeyes. It gets recognized at Popeyes and people would crosswalks. But as I see the plan now, you go from the parking lot of, well, is that the parking lot for the theater or is that the parking lot for Popeyes? And at least in question for people. And also, your road goes halfway through it and it just leaves some questions. And so that's why I'm questioning this, is, you know, why, is there a legal reason why or is it just a choice? Or is it something that we can work out, you know, in that regard?
I could probably address that.
Okay.
Years ago, the theaters were looking for a rent reduction when they were doing a major renovation with all their digital movie screen projectors.
Right, right.
So we helped them, gave them a little relief, and then I asked for this 15,000 square foot area back. And also, a cross-parking agreement, that whatever we put there, they have equal cross-parking rights.
Okay.
So there's not gonna be a case of, hey, get out of my lot and you can't park there and all that. So, which I did provide to Rich and he passed on.
Yes.
Okay. So the reason that, so that lot there is, was divided out separately.
I removed it from the theater leased area.
From the theater leased area, okay.
Okay. So I was thinking like, Rich, you're gonna have two islands there or one island in the theater parking lot by the handicap signs that were proposed originally?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe just some type of, even a little sign there, just saying Popeyes parking or.
Yeah, we had considered putting in a couple of islands so that there was some demarcation between the two lots.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
However, the, I don't know if the owner of the theater loved that idea because it's shared and he's like, why do you, why do you feel like those are being carved out of my field?
Yeah, if he's already agreed to the, you know, I mean, if you could, I think it, for you, in the long run, it would be better because it would all look like Popeyes inclusive. And if you get the written agreement before, this shouldn't be an issue. Okay? I don't want to hold it up.
No.
But if it can be worked out, I think it'd be worked out in the benefit of everybody.
You mean, just to identify for the customers that that is Popeyes parking?
Yeah, that is Popeyes. Because if you think about it, we have a similar situation on the other side of town. And again, it's a shared lease agreement. But if you go to Lowe's and then in the front, you get the Texas Roadhouse.
Yeah, yeah.
And they have a similar agreement where they got the road and the parking is on the other side of the road. Well, there's a lot of people, well, gee, well, you know, and there have been some issues, even though there's a shared agreement, the customer doesn't know about the shared agreements and they have an issue with going over and parking, even though there is an agreement. We have no problem with the space. There's plenty of parking, but it's the customer that has the issue because they don't know about it. Okay? And that's the only thing that I'm trying to, if you could work out something.
Yeah, let's use.
Would the introducing a couple of islands that basically delineate Popeyes parking field versus the theater, even though it's shared, we're gonna lose a few spots to do that.
We'd lose a few spaces.
Or four.
Or four, yeah.
Yeah, we could put them like right here and right here with that.
That probably would, yeah, I think that would, so that brings you, you know, it'll also give you your whole site.
Yeah, correct. Visually speaking, too, it gives something for people to identify with.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
They don't need to know that there's a lease agreement.
No, they have, no, 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 no. And that's, but people perceive things and sometimes your perception gets you in trouble.
Sure. Okay. Kristen did ask us to do a parking analysis for the entire parcel because it was a mixed use.
Right.
And there was a concern that we may run out of spaces.
I didn't put it in the package. I do have it here, though, if you want to, I'm passing around. Just to make sure there's enough spaces between the theater and the Popeyes, which they have shown in the parking analysis.
All right. So based on the use and maybe, maybe you could explain the differences in the theater, how that's changed the.
Oh, yeah, they're renovating five theaters right now and they're putting in those nice big recliner seats.
Oh, I like those.
Yeah. But, but because they're a bigger seat, it's almost like a two to three ratio or two to three and a half.
Right, right.
So they're gonna actually lose 130 seats and would be a ratio of six to one. It'll be a gain of about 21.66 spaces.
Okay.
He's gonna keep the prices the same.
I go to the movies a lot there and I end up in the parking lot and it's always completely empty.
Yeah, that's I've never seen, you know.
There's gonna be plenty of parking.
Plenty of parking.
So based on the Lemonster bylaw, we're required to have 326 spaces in three, excuse me, stacking spaces in the drive-through.
Right.
And we're proposing 335 and 10 stacking spaces in the drive-through. So we meet the minimum requirements and even if we have to lose a few, four to introduce a couple of islands, we'll still be above the minimum.
Right.
All right, now that we talked about it, let's see.
Yeah.
So again, the proposed development is a Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen. It's a 46-seat dine-in restaurant with a drive-through. Additionally, there is a dumpster corral with two dumpster pad. The drive-through has 10 stacking spaces.
On the dumpster. Okay. Is there any place, can you put that on the other side? Is there a problem with that, with the operation?
It's off the lease, it's off the parcel.
You're on your.
That's the only problem with it.
Can't put in the parking area.
It would be off that lease area.
Because I look at that and the dumpster, that's right on the main road there. And a dumpster right on the corner on the main, you know, that's.
Well, it can be fenced in, too.
Yeah, there's a fairly ornate corral. And then we're also going to plant arboretums around it for some additional screening. I don't know, if I slide the whole building over, I don't know if I'm gonna make it, I don't know if I'm gonna have enough. And then I'm gonna lose a lot of.
Because you got no parking in the front there. You just get the drive-through, you gotta make some lanes.
Yeah, the front entrance is here, so this typically what you'd see in a Louisiana, excuse me, Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen prototype is you have the drive-through and then you have a lane that circulates around just like this. The difference is you have diagonal parking here.
Right.
Instead of a parking field. So it's virtually the same thing. And then there's always a walkway, crosswalk over to the front entrance. And then obviously, if the parcel's large enough, they'll put diagonal parking up front as well. And then there would be a crosswalk up there. So this is not very different for them. And it does get pedestrians away from the, this portion of the drive-through, which can get a little hectic.
Right.
So that's not an issue from a layout perspective. If the goal is to move this out of this corner, I don't know if I'm gonna run out of room or not trying to do that.
There's nothing in the ordinance. It's really your call. We shouldn't be designing it.
Because this is a private property. Yeah, this is the.
That's on the corner.
No, 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 this is the market basket.
Market basket driveway.
Front parking field. There's a cut through right here. We're removing that cut through so that people won't zip across the parcel.
Right. It wouldn't fit in that back corner somewhere, would it?
No, because then the problem would be.
You'd have to enter it from.
Accessing it. Okay, so. I would certainly be, you know, willing to give it a look if it was that corner. It would be difficult pushing. I'm sure I wondered it at some point, too. Tried to get it to all fit.
Yeah.
Excuse me. From a grading perspective, the site remains virtually the same. It's got a slight pitch in this direction here and the slab will be cut in to existing grade and meet ADA compliance from a finished floor perspective. From a drainage perspective, we are going to utilize the existing drainage system. We did perform a hydraulic analysis and a summary, and prepared a summary report, which we submitted to the D P, which they reviewed and had no comment. We met with them prior to see what it was they might be looking for. I believe the site's exempt from a local bylaw due to the size. We do have a decrease in impervious area of about 2,200 square feet from bit conch to landscaping. And we also have the conversion of 2,268 square feet of pavement to roof. And the roof's kind of much cleaner runoff than the pavement does. So those two things combined definitely enhance the overall stormwater management on the site. And we do have a slight decrease in peak flows from pre to post because we're introducing the 2,200 square feet of landscaping area.
So you say you're closing that little road that goes.
Yeah, the little cut through.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a pylon sign right here. There's also some facade signing, but that'll be a different application, I believe. Yeah, we showed what the standards look like. From a utility perspective, we're gonna have the full gamut, water, sewer, electric, telephone, gas. As I mentioned previously, we've increased the size of the sewer connection from four inches to six inches per the DPW's recommendation. We also originally were proposing a thousand gallon grease trap. However, per Lemonster Rules and Rights regarding grease trap sizing, we had to increase it to 2,000 square, excuse me, gallons, which we have. These are just your standard details. So what you're seeing here is this is a standard pylon for Popeyes. They have different sizes depending on where they're located. The PA does not mean it's 80 feet tall. It's just a designation.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 20, I believe it's 25 or six feet tall total. These are the signs that you see throughout the site that direct people, vehicles around. We have a handful of those. And this is a typical facade sign, which you'll see on the, probably the two front facades that face SAC and Cinema. Based on obviously the sizing requirements of this. Lastly, what you're seeing here, what you haven't seen before is we have the manufacturer that does all the Popeyes lighting, run the photometrics. We weren't proposing any perimeter lighting because the existing parking lot is extremely well-lit, as is the surrounding area. The place is, is really, really well-lit. So we're going to limit our proposed lighting to facade lighting. Very difficult to see on these, unfortunately. I'll have to get you a better version, but you can see there's these, they call them goose necks, I believe.
Yeah.
And then there's some underlighting on the awnings. And the foot candles are sufficient for pedestrian and vehicular flow around the building. I actually have a phone, excuse me. Because the photometrics can be a little, they can leave a little bit to be desired, you know, from getting a good idea of what it looks like. That's a photo at dusk of an existing Popeyes. Gives you a sense of what the lighting looks like on two of the facades. So from a civil perspective, that's all I have. A moment. I can answer any questions or I can turn it over to Gary and he'll run through the architecture. At the closest point to the front entrance.
Okay. What are your hours of operation, standard?
Should be 10:30 a.m. to Friday 11:30 weekdays and then 12 o'clock on Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
Thank you. There are, I'm sorry, yeah. Let me switch these for it. What you'll notice is that I have, there's really small plants because I went to, I ordered them from Staples and I went to pick them up on the way here and they were small than they were supposed to be. They're 18 instead of. It's my breath and I'm like, huh.
I'll need my glasses for these.
I'm gonna get started with these boards here. This is a, oh, by the way, my name is Gary Wierostek. I'm at 462 Driveway in Linfield. We're an architectural design firm and we're also, we do the construction of the buildings.
Gary, can you clip that so it's on the top rather than, so that we can see it? Yeah, there you go. Maybe you want to take some of those others down. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to pop these down.
Yeah, we have the latest.
Just the big ones, Gary.
Yeah, we have the latest technology.
Yeah, latest technology and everything here.
In regard to the lighting, these are the goose necks that you've, that Rich spoke about earlier around the whole perimeter of the building. There is also lighting underneath the awnings. There's an LED lighting on each one of the awnings. More of an aesthetic situation, but it is a nice view. I didn't look at what you had there. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, so it illuminates the building beautifully along with the parking lot lights. Generally, we use an LED on parking lot lights, but I don't know what the existing situation is here. This is our prototype 46-seat Popeyes. We have embellishments throughout the building, which is, which is a balcony. This is, of course, this is just a parapet. It's all a facade and it's, these are just parapets. The building itself is only 14 feet. The parapets go above that at different elevations. We have a stone at the bottom, two reasons. We got an Eiffel Building, but we have a stone just, just so it doesn't get dented. Kids like to kick it and things like that. So the stone adds to it. These are things that Popeyes added throughout the years to the, to the building to try to, for betterment as we moved along in the past 10 years that I've been designing and building these. So this is, the landscaping, that's not ours. It looks kind of, looks like it hasn't been worn for a while.
Talking, Eric.
Well, yeah, yeah. We'll take that away from the equation.
That looks like mine, yeah.
Okay, this is the four sides of the building on your typical Popeyes. You've got the front, which I, which I showed you on that perspective on the left corner. This is our left side. That's, this is our drive-through with our drive-through window here. We get these aesthetic shutters that with the, same with the goose necks going around just to add more lighting as well as this aesthetic lighting around the perimeter. We also add a ladder just because, for service for the, to maintain the rooftop units and the hood system of the building. So this is a, the entrances, generally we place them on the left side, I'm sorry, the right side of the building. Second means of egress is on the left side, but it's off to the, it's off in the alcove here. We have a little walkway that generally comes out of there, which will, which I'll show you on the plans. It should be a layout of the floor plan that will show that particular design. In a, in a sense of colors, these are our standard colors. There are Benjamin Moore color. Some city in towns ask me, you know, is that the particular color that it's going to look like? And the answer is obviously no, because they can't, you know, make the exact same color on this poster that goes on the actual building. Now, more precisely, is the, is the, is the last illustration I showed you of the, that gives you a more perspective of what it looks like. And of course, in the daytime, with the light, it's gonna look differently, it's gonna look different than at night and as it's all illuminated. But these are the particular colors that we use. These are our standard colors. And so we're kind of like etched in stone with the colors. I've had other planning boards ask me if I could change the colors, but these are the Popeyes colors. It's like changing Duck and Donuts colors, yes. You just, we just don't do that. Any questions regarding the building itself?
Where is the, you showed us where the pickup is for the drive-through. Where's the speaker? The clown's mouth, if I could call it that.
Okay, well, that would be back here. Okay, so it's not, it's not showing it on this particular, but what it has is two things. We have, when we drive through the back here, that's a rear door. Okay, so that's the loading area. When we drive back here, there's a canopy now. This canopy just came in effect in the past, what, five years? Within the past five years, a beautiful canopy is now under the microphone, which is nice so you don't have to get rained on while you're ordering. That's also illuminated, so there's a nice light under it. So there's a very large canopy that comes out. A canopy is over. And, and then you, there's a pre-menu board, which is around this area here. Then you pull up to the microphone, which is around this area here. I can give you the exact. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm gonna show you the exact detail.
And they show up on the civil drawings as well.
Okay.
If you look at the back of the buildings. Yeah, they're just not called out.
I don't know if anyone can see it. If there's people further away, possibly can't. But this is our canopy here, okay? So this is our drive-through here. This is our pre-menu board that I was speaking of. So your pre-menu board, generally, the, once, once the employees get down the drive-through, it moves very quickly and there's never a line in here. They get, they get it out in a matter of a minute or two. You drive up, you order it, by the time you drive up, you get your food, you're on your way. They have an excellent system on expediting the food, so there's no wait. Unlike special orders, there is no real special orders with Popeyes. You just order what's on the menu and then you're on your way. So that is the canopy. I think I may have a elevation of it showing how nice it is because this doesn't do it any justice. This particularly round circle here, I don't know if Rich explained to you. This happens to be the grease captivating. What we do is this, is in the kitchen, the fry late is after, what do you change? Your, your oil? Weekly? So weekly, what they do is they pump the oil out and they store it into this tank. I believe the tank's around a fifty gallon tank. And they store it and it gets recycled. Not recycled back into Popeyes, but you know, into, you know, fuel and things like that. So it's reusable fuel for the oil. You know, in the old days, you used to dump it down the sewer. I think you know about that. That's why we have to put out these two thousand gallon tanks out there now. So that's what this is. Generally, what we do is aesthetically, we'll, we'll hide it in bushes. It's not, it's not ugly anyways. It's, it's a, right now, it's a circle because it looks like a, like a hot water heater. A very large hot water heater. But it's, but when it comes in, they put this brown box around it, which is, it's not a bad looking box. It's attractive looking box.
Do they heat it so it doesn't, so you can pump it out?
I'm sorry?
Is it heated?
Yes, it's actually heated from the time it, it, it starts to rise in the building because you know oil, once it, once it just even gets to, you know, normal temperature, it's gonna start to harden up. So it's always, it's constantly heated twenty-four seven to the, to the holding tank itself. So this is, this is constantly heated. It was, it was through trial and error, of course. And they said, let's, let's, let's heat this all the time. That's a good idea.
Right.
Because it's, so the, the tank is always heated also. That, the electrician has that tied in directly, you know, with his own designated, designated breaker. And like I said, what we do is we, the tank itself doesn't look bad, but aesthetically, we, we put some, some, you know, shrubbery around it. So maybe call it arbovites for, you know, for a better word. It's something, something nice that's gonna look, you know, better than just a box. And we mulch this area and we put bushes in this particular area. I'm sure if the landscape architect put any bushes back here, but we do put bushes in the, in the rear of this aesthetically. Low growth bushes as well as some, some high ones to make it look nice. The interior of the building, I don't know if you're that concerned about, you know, what the layout is, but I'm gonna run it over to you anyway. Forty, we have the forty-six seat. This is the new H countertop, they call it. There used to be a P, this turned into an H now. With the seating, it's a bar seating on this side with an array of different types of LED lighting. There's a lot of pretty lighting inside the building. They have all these beautiful pendants and stuff. The, the package of the lighting and the interior costs forty thousand dollars. It's like, you know, I built mansions before and haven't spent that type of money on lighting. So they, they do go overboard a little bit with the lighting. This is the, this is the service area. It's showing two cash registers. Generally, we have three. I'm unsure what this particular building's going to do, it's gonna do two, Ed. So two, we're gonna have the two that we proposed. Men's room, ladies' room. Generally, we designed it off the beating path of the dining room. So you exit the, you enter the, the airlock here. And then this is our second means of egress over here. And this is the little walkway. This is also an airlock, to save energy. And then this is the back of the kitchen. The coolers are back here, the walk-in cooler, walk-in freezer that we, we've located in the rear of this building. Different, different types of, Popeyes have different types of kitchen layouts. Generally, we stay the same with the interior. Sometimes it gets changed around, but generally, it's a prototype they use. They think it works well and so we, so we've been using that.
So your, your entrance is primarily on the right-hand side?
I'm sorry?
Your, your.
The primary entrance is this, this double door. Yeah, this would be the double door. Because this is the drive-through, you know, we don't really want people cutting through.
Yeah, there's no parking over there anyway.
Exactly. And the thing is, is we, we're building, we, we designed and built one in, which is going on now in Randolph. And it has an adjacent store to it. And so, you know, we designed a, it had an existing walkway. And one of the members of the board asked, you know, why we didn't, why we put the walkway over here instead of leaving it here? And, you know, which would have obviously crossed into the ongoing traffic. You know, so you just gotta be careful, you know. People drive through here, they don't look. People don't look. As soon as they get to Popeyes, they wanna get out. Generally, the parking's over here and this is where the people go. And it appears, I've been down there a few times, it appears there's no real foot traffic coming off the road. And so if they're coming through, they're generally driving. And so they're gonna park here or they're gonna just drive through. Questions on the, the floor plan itself?
I think we have more than enough information.
I've gone for another hour or two. As soon as I see somebody nod, that's when I'm gonna start. I'm getting tired myself. Hey, are we the only ones on?
Yeah, you got news.
Can I get plenty of time, guy? Okay, so this is what we went through before. This is the rear of the building, okay? I'm being redundant again with the, with the ladder and stuff like that. We don't have to go through all of this again. You've seen it. Colors are here. Here's redundancy at its best. And there it is once again at its best. If anybody has any questions about the exterior? Last chance, okay, it's clear. Okay, here's our landscape plan here. I'm not an expert in landscaping. But these look like trees to me.
Not bushes.
So I don't, I, I understand the common names of the landscaping that they have around. What we've done is, we've already, you, you had questions on the, on the corral. So we automatically fencing the corral. We use that plastic fencing because it looks the nicest. Maybe almond color, it's not, it doesn't stand out. It kinda like blends in with the, with the shrubs. So another planning board asked for almond. I think almond's probably the best color to go with at this point. So we're gonna use an almond color corral and we'll, we'll encompass it with, with the shrubs. That will basically conceal most of the corral itself. So you're not gonna be able to see it from the street as well as the other growth. What they have planned is Japanese maple, the thread maple. Those are those low growing thread, if anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. So a lot of people, a lot of you probably, you know, are familiar with the arbovites, five to six foot arbovites. You don't want them too big. You want things to walk because once things start growing, they really start growing. Cause I've seen, we put in stuff before because planning board wants us to overdo it. Next thing you know, it turns into a forest if it's not kept up well. So.
Make sure you keep it up.
Yeah, well, they, yeah.
Well, do you have a maintenance plan?
They have a maintenance, yeah, they have a maintenance program. See, Popeyes is very strict on every aspect of the building. So it's not the, it's not the owner's call. It's actually Popeyes Development and Popeyes Corp that makes the decision. So they have points taken away if they, if they don't do anything, you know, follow the rules and regulations. Questions on the landscaping? You show up? Very good.
That was just a part.
So I'm, I'm moving into the civil.
Gary.
And you don't want me to go this far.
That was just a parking plan, a blow-up of the parking plan in case anybody wanted to see it in a little more detail. And then the, the other graphics were just, to support the other submissions in case anybody wanted to see them larger scale, that's all.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, yeah, so that's existing conditions, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay, we're fine. Okay, are you all set? Okay, do I have any questions or comments from the audience? Somebody's gotta have something to say.
I'll go right back up to answer. We have plenty of time.
Second is motion.
Well, I can't, I gotta stand up one more time. It was says I gotta do certain things. Yes, Mr. Gag?
I, I just wanna add that, the only comment is that I've dealt with family with many different leases before.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Dave Gagny, Gagny Realty Corp. Here in Leominster. And my family's dealt with many different companies over the years. And this Popeyes group was one of the easiest people to deal with. We wrapped this negotiation up very quickly. Everything they said they would do with us in the negotiations was in the lease and vice versa. And usually I, we found that when you're dealing with someone that upfront in the beginning, that's the, the way they're gonna be as a tenant. So it's been, it was a smooth transaction and I look forward to working with them.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll ask one more time. Do I have anyone? Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for that motion.
We have to close the hearing.
Have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing? Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll say no. Motion carries. Okay. Call the audit for the regular meeting. What we'll do is we'll go through and we'll discuss this in about five minutes. And we have a very light agenda.
How about one?
Call the audit, please.
Kesha Karla.
Here.
Fred Frederick.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Salvador Chichoni. John Sousa.
Yep.
Jerome Toriosa.
Here.
Oscar.
Here.
Okay, do we have any new plans submitted? In the last.
I actually have meeting minutes. I should have handed this out earlier. It was from that short meeting, so.
Another three minutes?
Take a motion, accept the three minutes.
I have a motion made and seconded to accept the minutes of the May twenty-first meeting. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, here and now, I'll call for the vote. Do I have a motion? Motion made and seconded?
Seconded, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll say no. Minutes taken care of. Plans submitted? Nothing new, okay. Old business. Planning board recommendation for city council petition sixty-six dash eighteen. Barbara Richardson, except Garfield Street has an accepted way. There are a number of questions on that and one of them, I had a letter here from the DPW. And their, their questions are, you know, primarily mine is, is, and I'll read it. The Leominster Department of Homeland Works has reviewed the request and offers the following comments. The applicant needs to submit a plan and a deed description of what is being asked to be accepted. A couple of questions need to be made. Who owns Garfield Street? Do applicants have the ability to transfer the fee or an easement? I believe Garfield is one of these old paper streets that we have in the city. It's owned by multiple people, I think.
It's actually practically not a, not a paper street.
So if it's not, then, then we'll have to. Do you have, wish to say something concerning this?
I'm Anthony Zarella of Pittsburgh here on behalf of Barbara Richardson.
Okay.
Yes, it is a private way. We believe and we are attempting to ascertain for certain that it is owned to the middle by the parcel owners on either side.
Correct.
Totalling, what was it? Did it come up to?
Five, six, ten.
Eight, or eight or ten total parcel owners. I believe you had signatures from, how many of them total?
All but one.
All but, all but one have signed on to the petition. So as soon as we've ascertained for certain exactly where the lines lie, all but one of them are willing and able to transfer title?
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the primary question is if we can ascertain and then get the releases, the documentation. That's always a problem. That's the number one problem is you get involved with the, who owns the street? And, and then the second part is, the DP doesn't, doesn't mention it here, but then there's, you know, we'd have to act or have a survey, you know, of, of the property taken and the, the condition of the street ascertained to what exactly, you know, how does it meet the, the standard subdivision regulations? And that's one of the kickbacks that we have is on, is we know that Garfield's been on a long time.
Nineteen oh three.
Yeah. And, and, and that's one of our problems is that when Garfield was originally built, there were no subdivision regulations. But a lot because of safety regulations, we're trying to get the city to revise those, the requirements. So older streets like Garfield do not have to meet the, the full regulations. So that's what, that's what we're working on now. And so you're in the, you're in the process. I'm not sure it's gonna be too speedy, but at least you're in the process, okay?
Where is it? Where's Garfield?
Garfield is.
May I ask you?
Yeah, sure.
My name is Alfred Zarella. I'm a lifelong resident of Leominster and I do property in, in Leominster. And Garfield Street is one street over from the Babe Ruth Baseball Field. So it's on, it's right off of Old Lancaster Street and Willard Street.
Okay.
And Garfield Street, that's the intersection we're on.
There's like, there's like four different streets that go back into there, isn't it?
There's actually three that are paved. Gar, presidents, they're all presidents. Polk is, is not there.
St. John's. Presidents of your younger days.
Cleveland.
Cleveland, right.
So those are the three that are paved and then Roosevelt is not.
So. What had happened was, I think it wasn't Garfield, it was Cleveland. A number of years ago, we had developed and committed, put in like two houses anyway. And we required him to pave it. So then, so that's how that got done. So sometimes those things happen. Okay, so what, what we'll do is. It's gonna have to, well, we have to, this is gonna go back to the city council anyway. And they're, they're, they're gonna have to refer it back, you know, as a, they're gonna have to have a hearing. The DPW is gonna have to, you know, there's a whole bunch of other things to do, so. We can, I probably will, will bring up to them, but I think we continue it. And we can make some recommendations to the city council.
Yes, it is, it is currently.
It's paved, what, to eighteen feet?
Uh, I, no, it's a full fifty feet wide.
No, 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 that's your right away. I'm talking about the paved width.
I believe it's.
It varies.
It's an eighteen to twenty.
Yeah, between eighteen and twenty.
It runs right in the same, all those streets are the same, eighteen to twenty where. So, see, if we were to go to the subdivision regulations, we have to go to thirty-two feet. If, I'm just talking about a full subdivision and with a sidewalk, with streetlights and the whole package. Well, we know that, that's not gonna happen. Okay? So, so we've gotta get the, the city, and this is, what the problem we're in is you're in everybody's problem. These are older streets. They, they should have en masse been taken care of by, I'm gonna say twenty, thirty years ago and accepted as is and they plow them, they take care of them, they pave them. They, they've done a lot of things to these streets over the years. And it's all except for doing that final say and say. And, you know, so we, it's a problem that the city council is well aware of the problem. And I think you know that and.
You've heard them, they're talking about it in the paper and on the radio.
Right, and I think there's something like. For some reason, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, it's in that range, streets that have, have yet, that should be accepted, that our streets are in the city. Of course, we got a couple of the, just the opposite, that go up through the woods and they're already accepted. Of course, we've got a couple of just the opposite, that go up through the woods, and they're already accepted. And you couldn't go up that road with a four-by-four, so, you know, but they were accepted. So things happen. So we'll just be making a referral back to the, we'll discuss it. And, I don't know, well, this really isn't a hearing, so it's, do we-
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation at this point to the city council, anybody got a recommendation to the city council?
We have to get that information first, so we should keep it on the table.
So we'll keep it on the table, and we'll recommend the city council to follow through with the recommendations, and see if we can get a clarification on deeds and the status of the road.
Is that something you said you're working on?
Yes, we have and have submitted the actual deeds. But we do not have a full survey of the entire road yet.
Well, I had my property surveyed, but not completely.
So, but we do have deed descriptions of the road for the entire-
And that may be, that may be one of the problems to come up with, to get the road surveyed, so we know exactly where it is. And people know where their line is. And that's one of the problems we encounter many times, is that there's a forty-foot, probably it's an older street, is I'm making an assumption now that it's a forty-foot right-of-way. Well, with only twenty feet of that being paved, most of the driveways go, most of the roads go right up, I mean, the front yards, go right up to the road. So, some people have sprinkler systems, so they don't, there's no sidewalk. So, really, there's ten feet probably on either side of the road that you take care of as your front lawn.
Apparently, it's a dead end.
One side of the road has telephone poles.
Right.
And it seems clearly marked, fire hydrant lights. And the other side, which we're on, and a couple other houses, and they're well aware that they could lose frontage.
Including myself.
Yes.
So-
Chances are, that's not gonna happen, I mean, because they're not gonna want to redo the road right away. So I mean, it's just that, so that when it gets surveyed, that you know where the frontage is at, and that's one of the things. Okay.
So they'll have markers on both sides of the street.
Okay.
So it should be easy enough to-
Beautiful.
Get your markers.
So a motion is, I've got a motion to continue this, and to the next meeting.
Susan, Chairman Susan, does the State Park, Johnny Appleseed State Park at the end of the street have any banner on? Because I know they get a right-of-way.
Well, they have a right-of-way over the road. All the pens, you know, all these streets originally, they were, originally it's a paper street, and that's what we call it, it's a classification. And the paper street, the purpose is to provide access, not only to the side, but also to the end. So if the Johnny Appleseed Park that's in the back there, they would have access. There should be a, I don't know, but there should be an easement of some kind. Or they should have in their paperwork, an authority to pass a repass.
And nearly every deed in, there's a hundred and twenty-one lots in this Homestead Park. And nearly every deed that I've seen online has right-of-way for all the paper streets.
That's correct.
So we all have right-of-way of that, up and down the whole way.
Oh, yeah, that was all done in the nineteen twenties and thirties.
1903.
And yours was one of the early ones.
And Leominster, the city of Leominster is one of the bigger landowners of this development. Because during the Depression, they picked up quite a few plots of land. So they've owned on and off.
Right, right.
Throughout the property. Right now, the traffic we're looking at, though, is bicycles. We got a couple kids that are like four, five years old, and they're getting on their bikes. And it'd be nice to see them being able to travel up and down the street as you're talking, as they're grown up. And that's where my kids were raised, and I'd like to see them-
What's that, about ten houses on that street?
Yeah, there's ten, two of them are on Lancaster.
And then, okay.
And then two of them are on Hayes, but there's ten altogether.
Okay, good. Okay, we can, thank you for the information, and we'll just be making a referral to the city council. Well, our first motion was to leave it open. For further information, and also, and to-
Until we get information.
Yeah, until we get further information from the DPW and the city council, we really can't make a recommendation. We can't make a full recommendation.
So we're gonna leave it as old business?
Yeah, we'll leave it open for them, just leave a message, send a message to the city council, we've heard it. And we think they should, you know, proceed the best they can to get this as an accepted street.
Well, we didn't go to that.
No, no, we don't, no, no, but they, for them to proceed, because it's up to the city council now, and the DPW, it's not, and we can't tell them what to do. All we do is make a recommendation that they-
But we can't make a recommendation on information, that was the point.
We need the further, we need, before we can make, okay?
The only message we're sending today is we need additional information.
That's all.
Can we just tell them we received their letter, and I'm sure they're gonna get it, so when we have that information?
Yeah.
Receive the letter.
That they already have.
Now, remember, this was, I borrowed this from the DPW, because they wrote this to the city council. This was their letter of recommendation.
Yeah, so-
That's what, right, because it provided information about the ownership or the lack of knowledge of that.
Yeah, so, like I said, we're, you know-
So we're gonna wait for information that-
Further information, right.
Has been described on this letter, okay?
I believe the city council said they were still waiting for a letter from the city solicitor also. And he was supposed to define who owns the street.
Yeah, and that's all of that, we can't do anything till, that's right, all of the city solicitor, and then there has to be a, I don't know what the definition is, but they call it a land taking, an easement, land-taking, and it's a friendly one, that everybody has, all the deeds have to be changed. So it's not, there's a process, right? And if there are any costs, you know, that's usually shared by the landowners. So, I know that's happened in the past.
On the deeds, though, they don't show the land, I know we own to the center, but none of the deeds specify that. And it all specifies that there is a fifty-foot road in between.
The plots, you mean?
Yeah, the plots.
On the plot plan.
So on the plot plan, and they've done it with all five streets, that the road is clearly defined, and the markers are not in the middle of the street, they're all on the sides.
On the sides, right, okay. So that's up to, so that, from that, a deed can be developed. And then your deeds all get modified, and when that new deed, then the city solicitor says, yes, this is right. Then the city can accept the deed.
Yeah.
The new deed, once it's transferred and combined, and then they can accept the street.
I'm trying to get the recommend, whatever they get from the camp, the-
City Solicitor.
City Solicitor, and then I will, when I get that, we'll bring it back up on the agenda, so we can review that.
Yeah, we're just gonna, the motion was to refer it to the city council, we just need further information.
Table it, table it, that was the motion.
And table, well, no, we table, we get tabled to a definite time, we can't table indefinitely. Yeah, the motion to table has to be to a definite time. So, table to, give it a month.
Okay. I don't know if we know what our July means yet, it's true.
Whatever, whatever the July schedule is, yeah.
There's only one in July.
There'll only be one, it'll be the third week in July.
The sixteenth? July sixteenth?
Okay.
It's good, thank you. Thank you for your time.
I have a motion made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, new business, site plan approval, forty-five Sac Boulevard, Popeyes.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion made in second to approve.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go through the department head comments.
Didn't we do that?
No, we don't know.
It was, I don't think, I think they've all already applied. They've all, they've all been addressed. Landscapes, no storage.
Bike size.
Bike size.
Yeah, I thought it was all addressed, so it was.
Widen is good and everything.
Okay.
That was a very good presentation. Excellent.
No problem.
It's called being thorough.
It was, they covered everything, and well, you know why? You know why they were thorough? Because they followed the ordinance, and they went through everything, thank you. I know, I know, I'm just saying, because-
Okay, motion by Carol to accept. I have a second panel. Any further discussion? No, good luck, I think the only comment I had was, I always gotta have another comment. That we had asked for, we'll just put this as a condition, is a modification to the parking, so we show some kind of delineation and between the parking lot, and what we'll do is, we'll make that, refer it back to our director, so that all you gotta do is come up with some kind of a plan, and refer it, so you don't have to come back to another meeting.
Provide the updated plan.
Okay, so it'll just be done on a plan, and just back to her.
Could it be a sign on the existing island?
It could be, it could, it could be, it could be as thing as changing your striping.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Maybe the color of the stripe.
Or something to delineate the different parking lot, okay? Like I said, just change the striping, so that the striping's a little bit different than the double line around or something. I don't know, but be creative, okay? And we're not asking for a lot, just, then we'll like, just refer it back to our director, she can take a look at it, and give you the final, you know, get-go. But I don't see it, I don't see it as a big thing, a stop or a not, asking you to come back, or nothing, okay?
Yeah, that would be, we prefer that over the islands, but the islands, you know, we're gonna lose those spots, and we've got these islands in the middle of a very large area, they're gonna get wiped out by plows.
No, I wouldn't put islands, yeah.
Yeah, so some type of, just striping.
Remember you had showed me a little arrow on the theater island? No, not in the middle, on the theater island, right there, just a little parking, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Doesn't even have to be lit, doesn't even need parking.
That's just some place that's such a, you do delineate it, that this is the parking that goes with Popeyes. And not the, okay?
Okay, I make a motion with that condition.
Any other questions? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.
Good luck, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You made course of spinach, right?
Rice and beans. I picked this here one last time.
Well, clearly, you're not the first, he's probably got a worse qualifier, so.
Just trying to put it out to him. I can hide behind if anybody wants to look at him later.
They're not the same.
Just make sure I know when you're open, because I like Popeyes.
Well, give me a jingle.
Yeah, I want Popeyes ready.
She wants to go to the grand opening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have any communications? Do we have a director's report, comments? Yes, she does. Okay.
How about, after we close the meeting?
Okay.
Motion to close the air.
Exactly, session, nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I have a motion by Carol to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, to an all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Okay.